I'd like to call to order a special call meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. We have one item on our agenda this evening, and that is the line-by-line review of the FY23 budget. Really disappointed that we didn't have more people here for this exciting evening of information that's being presented. But for those of you who are here, plus the millions that are watching, we're going to... I hope so. Yeah, I hope they are. Okay. We'll move through this expeditiously. If you have questions along the way, just stop me and we'll try to get your question answered. I've got a couple of questions before we get started, so we don't have to stop in the midst of doing this. This is information that's in there. Probably what I'm asking, I should know, but I don't, so I'm asking. So my first question, explain to me what the hybrid stabilizer means. What is that?
The Hybrid Stabilization Reserve Trust, or SRT. It's a little convoluted and complicated, actually, but so when the state created the hybrid plan for retirees, they have part that pays for current year retirees and part that goes to a stabilization reserve trust or an SRT. The federal government came in a couple of years later and said, "Federal grants can only be used to pay for current year retirees, so we won't contribute that SRT." So they made us split it out. So we have to, they created that new object code, that 217, and we have to, in general fund, we have to pay that as well as the current year, if you will, which falls under the 204. For federal grants, they don't pay that 217. So, but that's why we had to split it out. But basically, the two combined equals 4%, which is what we have to kind of contribute to that reserve for future retirees.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question is, how far away are we from the career ladder just being nonexistent? Are we getting close to that point? I mean, not that that's going to matter one way or the other, that's just, I'm just curious. Because it's still, it's still there, and it does-
It is still there, and it will be there until everybody who's been eligible for it retires. So every year, it just gets less and less. If we, I think we have six people that are on the list for the May payment that are retiring, so that'll be six fewer next year. But I think we still... Do you remember, Matt, how many we had this year?
I would guess in the 30s.
Okay.
Okay. Alan, this is probably a question for you. Gas prices are going who knows where. Do we feel comfortable with what we have in here to cover what they might or might not be? I know that's a loaded question.
Just imagine you're on the national news right now.
Yeah.
That's what mid-year spend is for.
Yeah, true.
Realistically, we tried to look at it and pad it this year to make sure that we were covered, but nobody's anticipated the costs that we've seen. And so we're just plugging away, and we're going to look at it a lot closer this year. And we're working on a way to be able to get cost expenditures on a monthly basis, as opposed to what we've received in the past, which has been quarterly or longer, so that we can keep a closer eye on it.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go to page 12. Oak Ridge Schools FY 2022-2023 Proposed Budget Fund 141 General Purpose School Fund Expenditures Detail. That's where I'm going to start. And that will, we will end, I think, on page 80, or there, close to it. I had the question asked, you're going to take the budget and you're going to go through every page in the budget? No, there's not much we can do about revenue coming in, but we can control the expenditures that are going out if we so choose. On page, and let me, before we go, were there any other general questions that anybody has before we get into this that anybody would want to ask at this point? Ms. McLean?
I had reached out to Jennifer about ECC and the reason that the expenditures are going up. And just FYI, that's because they're going to restart the summer program this summer, where we hadn't done it for the last couple of years because of COVID. Thank you.
If we start on page 12 and go to page 17, we're looking at primarily the expenditures for our teaching assignments across the district. And in those pages, that also includes such things as certified substitute teachers, social security, retirement, life insurance, medical insurance, dental insurance, employee Medicare, retirement, there's the hybrid stabilized, vision, and other fringe benefits, and other contracted services, and instructional supply materials. Those are areas that you'll see throughout the expenditures. I'm not going to go over those every time they pop up. So if there's any question about those at any point in time, please ask. Does anyone have a question on pages 12 through 17? Okay, as we look still on page now, 18, we pick up the instructional supply materials, textbooks, both electronic and bound, software, furniture and fixtures, and the always-present Any questions there? And that information takes us through page 20. On page, beginning on page 21, we have line items 71150, Alternative Instruction Program. You can look through that and what the expenses are within that program, which takes us to page 22, and we show an increase in this area of 3.52%. Any questions there? As we move over to page 23, we go to 71-200, Special Education Program. And this, these line items, take a look at the special education programs across our As we look at both the teachers, assistants, homebound teachers, speech pathologists, and special education equipment, this area shows an increase of 7.07%.
Does anybody know, how does that compare possibly with other districts? Are we about... Oh.
The question I had was just, when we look at 7%, are we in the ballpark of where other districts are in the state? Are we low, high, so-so? It's, you know, not that the comparisons are needed, but it's just in a thought of having, okay, are we in that same range as the other districts in what we're trying to do, or what we are doing for our students that have special needs?
I might ask Mr. Stoltz his thoughts on that, but you know, there are so many different variables, district to district, and I think this board knows that, for good reasons, many, many parents have come to Oak Ridge because of our special ed program and some of the great things that are happening for kids. But again, lots of different variables, but Mr. Stoltz, anything addition?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our per pupil expenditures are very on par with other districts, just based on my experience across the state. The main part of that increase would be the salary line items for the personnel, as well as the increased personnel. Because like Dr. Borchers alluded to, we have had a number of families move in with students with special needs. From December 1st until just a few days ago, we were up approximately 160 students with IEPs, just in that 16-month span. So we've seen a major increase recently, basically since COVID.
Okay. It's one of those areas that from time to time, you would give us some feedback so that we got some sense, is that same growth, or for lack of a better term, is occurring, would be helpful. It's one of those things where if we can squeeze in a little lead time, ahead of time, if we anticipate some growth in this area, and recognizing that, yes, personally, and from feedback from some other families and family members, I definitely commend the staff for doing that tough job of helping to identify the needs that the child has and/or the family, and then working with them and other resources to get the children or the families the help that they need. So thanks a million for what you're already doing. I just wanted to get some sense of, is this growing with the population as we're having more students come in? And what you just said kind of feeds that idea that I see happening, because if I'm in the parent's shoes, I'll beg, borrow, and steal, or whatever I got to do to get my child in an area where they can get some help. And we have a very, very, very caring community here, not only for education, but part of that is the whole body, mind and body kind of help as needed. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Moving on to page 27, 71-300, Career and Technical Education Program. That takes us to page 28, which show an increase of 2.9% in that area. On page 29-
These are our fourth primary, the additive automotive, cyber, and welding.
Page 29, 71-900, shows our contingency, instructional contingency. Move to page 30, program is 72-120, is our health services. Any questions? That takes us to, through page 31. On page 32, 72-130, Other Student Support. Page 35, Regular Instructional Support. This section includes instructional staff, planning development, and so forth. Also includes our librarians and budgeted money for supplies for our libraries. And that also includes in-service stipends, as well as instructional supply materials, and media from the software to periodicals. Also included in this is staff development. And that takes us through page 41 for that line item. On page 42, 72-220, is Special Education Support. And this includes psychological personnel, as well as activities that include insisting the special education staff. And that takes us through page 43. Page 44, 72-230, Career and Technical Program Support. This line item character, includes expenses characterized as assisting the technology center instructional staff in planning development and evaluating the process of providing learning experiences for students. And that takes us through page 45. On page 46, 72-250, Technology Services. And this includes, among other things, computer programmers, data processing personnel, data processing supplies, software, staff development, equipment. And that takes us through page 48. 72-290, on page 49, Communications. And these activities include all district communication support. And that takes us through page 50. 72-310 is Board of Education. I always think back to Mr. Degorio. I always like to point out that this expense money was not money that the Board of Education personally receives.
No, we paid for the trip to Tahiti ahead of time.
Yeah. I would, on line 320, dues and memberships, we need to take National School Boards Association out, because that doesn't apply, and we would need to add COSPA, the Consortium of State School Board Associations. At this point in time, the membership dues is being paid through Tennessee School Board Association. There will be a time where there will be individual dues for local boards, but that number has not yet been set. So I don't, and it, I think we're covered more than what we need to be covered right here in this line item. And that takes us through page 52. 72-320 is Director of Schools, reflects the activities performed by the Superintendent of Schools and Assistants. And that takes us through page 54. Page 55 is 72-410, Office of the Principal. And these items within this category cover our principals at all of our districts within the school, or all the schools within our district, as well as assistant principals, secretaries, clerical personnel, staff development, and equipment. Which would take us to page 59. 72-510, Fiscal Services. Includes our supervisor, director, accountants, bookkeepers, purchasing personnel, secretaries, clerical personnel, software, supplies, equipment, and so forth. And that takes us through page 62.
These are the people that keep us out of jail.
72-520, Human Resources Personnel, our supervisor, director, secretaries, equipment, development, software, office supplies. Takes us through page 64. 72-610, Operation of Plant, our supervisor, director, secretaries, custodial personnel, contracted services, supplies, electricity, fuel, oil, natural gas, water, sewer, boiler insurance, building and content insurance, staff development, plant operation, equipment. And this takes us through page 68. 72-620, Maintenance of Plant, again, supervisor, director, secretaries, maintenance personnel, maintenance, repair buildings, repair equipment, repair vehicles, equipment and machinery parks, gasoline, construction materials, software, staff development, and other items included. Take us to page 71. On page 72, 72-710, Transportation, is the process of our contracted service with, for And that ends on page 72 as well. 73-300, Community Services. This line was used in FY 21 to issue one-time bonus payments for employees paid out of funds 143 Cafeteria, Extended Childcare and Family Resource Center. You can see that line item, it's zero for this budget. 73-400, Early Childhood Education, covers our staff. Page 75, 73-401, Pre-K General Fund, principals, teachers, medical personnel, secretaries, assistants, custodial personnel. Which takes us through page 77. And on page 78 is 76-100, Regular Capital Outlay, which includes consultants, engineering services, debt service, building improvement, site development. And on page 79 is 99100, Transfers Out. This would be the line item where transfers are made from one line item to another through this line item. And that takes us to page 80. 99100, again, that's part of the transfers out. And which shows a proposed budget of $64,771,205. And as always, we keep in mind, a budget is just what it is. It is a budget. Things do change during the course of a year. Any questions or comments on any of the topics and related to the budget? Ms. Agel?
I believe this is the easiest budget we have had, certainly since 2003.
I'll knock on wood for you.
And I certainly do agree with that, and I think the effort is not ours, obviously. The effort is staff, superintendent, his staff, and definitely your staff down there. I know they work hard to get this in place, and they probably like to go a year where the budget goes in, and throughout the year, there's nothing that happens to the budget, but we know that's not going to happen.
That would be fantastic, but yeah, that's not going to happen.
We'll hope the changes are few, and that the changes we get are the good changes that we like, and that's those grants coming in and other monies that we may be receiving during the course of the year.
I, as you were going, as we were going through this, I was thinking, within the major departments, for the directors or whatever, do you have, like most of us, I think, would when we were ordering stuff from Amazon or whatever, okay, this is the stuff I got to have, but these three things over here, if, if everything works right, these are the two or three things on my wish list over here that I'd like to add that may not be required. I guess from time to time, I would like to hear or someone speak to what kinds of things that may be on the wish list. Because I have had citizens, organizations that ask, how can we partner formally or informally? Do we do that just on one particular item where we could write a check, and then they could get whatever gear or whatever they want, or, I'm thinking now of civic organizations or clubs, or those kinds of things that want to help the students. I give, I'll give an easy example, like the article that was in the paper when we were talking about the anchor they were able to get for NROTC. And someone asked me, did you know that NROTC has a booster club? And I was like, the entire education system of Oak Ridge has a booster club, so and so. So this- So, so, so this is one of the beautiful parts about this city. As far as I'm concerned, that's the example I give everyone. You always hear about the booster clubs for the sports teams, but Oak Ridge has a booster club for the entire educational system, which is awesome. But the reason I was making the comment is that folks sometimes look for, how can we partner with the system? What are some particular programs that you're going to do for students that donations would help, or, you know, even if we could round up a thousand dollars to contribute, how do we know? What are the items? My advice has to be, been to talk to any of you three to get a better feel, and that's where I usually refer them to, to get some sense of, here's an area where you can help, especially if you want to help students that are disadvantaged, or programs that are specifically to help uplift families and those kinds of things. So I guess I'm saying, from time to time, give us a little feedback of what or where help is needed, and if the community would like to contribute or donate some time as far as their involvement as tutors, or whatever the case may be, let them know. I keep the community well informed of, here's what we're trying to do, here's where we've gotten so far, we could really use some help in A, B, and C, in terms of anyone that has skill sets in this area, contact, you know, Mr. Lay or Dr. Williams, or whatever, to get more feedback on it. So I think that's one thing that I've seen that we can do a little bit better, as the community wants to get more involved, here is how they can do that, so.
When they say that, you put them in your car, and you drive them to this building, is what you do. Okay, anyone else? Busy week for everybody this week, and not only are we back here again on Wednesday for first reading and public hearing, we have convocation this week, we have graduation on Friday, a lot of events going on this week at various schools and so forth, concerts. I would invite you, if you haven't been to, I know you got information, to drop by Glenwood and see the neat things that are going on there this week with all their grade levels, some really neat stuff that they're doing this week. So a lot for us, a lot for the kids to finish up this week, and staff, and we'll hope for, right now, looks like it's going to be good weather, but it's going to be warmish, to say the least, on Friday. And then we've got, Ms. McLean, anything you want? So we've got graduation celebration on Friday evening, correct?
Yes, graduation celebration is a go. We are still registering kids, so if you know a senior or if you are a senior, it's not too late to register. It's a free party, free food, free getting into the main event, everything's free. So yeah, we would love for everybody to be there. Thanks.
And those who attended tonight in person, thank you. Those who watched, we thank you. We'll see you again on Wednesday at five-thirty. We stand adjourned.